Okay. So, now that we have everybody that is available to us tonight, I'll just confirm the roll call. Mike Beftis.
Yeah.
Sherri Corbett.
Here.
Sam Corbett.
Here.
Michael King is here, Jane Gleason absent, and Kyle Schultz absent. Tonight, we have a discussion on Project thirty-three dash twenty-one Wareham PV One LLC Zero Route Twenty-Five Energy, Solar Energy Generation Facility Review Draft Decision. We received some, a little bit of feedback from the proponents at the last discussion and via some letters asking for some consideration in reopening the public hearing so that we could gather some important information concerning the potential battery fire slash event mitigation and how it would pose a threat to the water supply and the proponents' plans or hopes to present some information from experts on how they would plan to stop such a problem. So, in light of the review, I think I would, at the very least, out of consideration for the proponents, I would entertain a motion to reopen the public hearing so that we could gather some information on the safety consideration of this project and make sure that we have left no stone unturned for both the proponent and the town of Wareham residents. So, I would need, actually, Ken, can I make the motion?
You shouldn't.
I shouldn't, okay.
You can make the motion and have somebody else actually move it.
Right, okay, so, I'm making the motion to reopen the public hearing to gather additional information concerning safety mitigation plans concerning the batteries for Zero Route Twenty-Five.
Can I second it?
You can move it.
So moved, okay. So, to that, we would have discussion?
Discussion on the motion.
On the motion, and then ultimately, the available members to vote on whether to approve of the motion. So, anybody want to weigh in on this before we decide?
I'll weigh in. So, I know we might have some not our usual really good microphone situation, so I'll speak up. Before this meeting, Mike and I spent some time with town council, talking about the correspondence that we've received and the, this case as it stands now. And without going into advice that we received from council, which would not be appropriate, what is really clear to us is that this is a really important case, not just for, for this particular case, but for battery storage generally in this town and probably even precedent-setting across the state. And, you know, given the importance of this case, I would suggest that we want to proceed with the strongest record and most complete record possible on the issues here, and we've got several key issues. One is the safety of battery storage, and I would say some of what we would like to rely on is not in the record in this case, and so, to that degree, the record could be strengthened. And we also have not had as much information, I think, from the applicants and the public as we could benefit from. And this is both in the area of battery, battery storage safety and also, I would say, in hydrogeology. Now, given, given the importance of the case, I'm not, and I would have to say, I'm saying this very reluctantly because I know that this board has spent a lot of time on this case already, and reopening it for more information might not be your first instinct or the most appealing thing at this point, but for the sake of this issue and making the best possible decision and having the best possible chance of a successful appeal, I would suggest that we should not, we, because I will not be voting here, but the board should, should strongly consider this. And, and I think, to the degree that, that you do want to consider it, that we consider doing it in a very focused way and try to put parameters on it, procedural schedules, and, and to do this efficiently focusing on the issues of concern.
I, I agree. Sam, do you want to weigh in on this subject before we?
My main concern has been from day one, public safety of the water supply. After the last meeting or two, I was standing next to Nancy McHale and saw on her phone she had a map of the aquifer. I said, "Where'd you get that?" She says, "Well, Plymouth, Plymouth Harbor, Solus Aquifer." Committee set up by Senator Murray and Senator Pacheco, then Representative Pacheco, decided to read through their findings, and basically, the legislature, their subcommittee, and EPA all have strong opinions on doing anything on the aquifer. And getting into discussion of potential pollutants, as I said many times, you can walk to three Wareham, water, pot, pumps from this site in short order. Down the power line, take it right, take your first left, there's a pump. Walk five minutes, another pump. Walk ten minutes, another pump. And according to everything I've read from EPA, the state, their subcommittees, they don't want us even to put fertilizers on the lawn. And I know it's a one to two percent chance, but that would basically take our only source of water away. And, you know, read some of the things from EPA and the subcommittee and the state legislature, they're all hysterical about protecting the water because if it gets polluted in any way, we're done. We have no lake or river or anything to draw from, so there'd be no water in Wareham. And we've been talking about this for eighteen months. I know the battery storage is a new issue compared to what we were talking about eighteen months ago, but I still can't get away from anything happening that could pollute the aquifer. And, you know, we've had tons of concerns of this site and other sites, and they're all valid, but there's only a little piece of Wareham, North Wareham, West Wareham, that aren't sitting on the aquifer. And that's my main concern, along with a lot of other ones, but I've said from the beginning, this particular site, of all the sites we've looked at, present and past, is probably the best site I've seen. It's been, it's already cleared. There's, I think, four sites next to it, Shorcrede, Shorcrede, a couple others. It can't be seen by the public, it's not going to be seen by the public. It has a lot of things going for it until I get into the reading on the aquifer. And you start reading, you start wondering, why am I fertilizing my lawn? It's, it's that dangerous. Those are the reasons I voted the way I did, and I can't see them changing.
May I ask?
Yeah.
Do your concerns and objections also extend to the solar array, or is it focused on the battery?
On the batteries, yes. Solar array, less.
Less so.
Less so. Less, but still, you have to...
See, the studies we've seen are basically the batteries malfunctioning in some way. That's my main concern. We've seen the terrible stories all over the world, and when we start seeing, reading stories about these things that happen all around the world, it can happen. It's a small percent, one to two percent, but it can happen. It's so critical that if it happens, we have no water.
I think to, to Sherri's point, I, I, I've said it as soon as I was made aware of it, that the batteries concerned me, which is why I voted the way I did.
Yeah.
To Sherri's point, I'm concerned about not having or not allowing all the possible expert input to be heard. Because this, this can go one of two ways, you know, we, we either, we hear more input from the proponent and, you know, they bring in an expert that is in, you know, mitigation of battery technology and, you know, events and whatnot, and they, we can hire our own expert. I think the hydrologist is a great idea. The one that Mr. Horstley did was cursory, but it wasn't to the extent that the hydrology report that we got for Ferringill, that, that was a very detailed analysis. I think if we, if we listen to all of that and give them the opportunity to present, and then we still don't like it, we're still in a position to say no. The problem that, that I'm concerned about is if we don't allow the information and we do say no, that we don't have, we don't have a defensible decision.
Not as strong as it could be.
Not as strong, it's sort of defensible.
As strong as it could be.
I mean, you can't...
I think we'd be, I think, I think we'd be selling, I think we'd be selling, we'd be selling the proponent short by not allowing them to, to give us their very best argument for the batteries. And we'd be selling the townspeople short by not getting that information, using it, and saying, you know, "Thanks, you know, we appreciate that you came in, we appreciate that you took the extra time to bring in experts to try to relieve the concerns about the potential contamination, but at the end of the day, we still don't think that we're acting in the best interest of the town as far as the health and safety." And, and if none of, if we don't allow that to happen, and we do end up in litigation, and we do lose because we didn't listen to that extra piece of information, I, I think we're doing the town an injustice. The, the thought of going and reopening and going another two months, six months, whatever it might be, for this to play out, well, I mean, I'm trying to paint a...
I give it eighteen months. I wouldn't go six months.
It's, it's not, it's not high on my list of things to do because we have been working very hard on this for the past year and a half, but me personally, I think it's the right thing to do to protect the town and its people, and I think it's the right thing to do to protect the proponents' rights to take their best swing at the ball. And if they come up short and we say no, we've done everything we should have done, which includes allowing expert testimony on the mitigation of a possible event, which is that, I mean, let's get down to it, that's our, that's our main concern.
I, I don't disagree with anything you said, but I don't think there's anybody that could bring in that can guarantee me zero percent.
Well, at the end of the day, I, I agree, if someone, if, if they come in...
Zero percent.
If they come in and they give you their best shot, and you, and you say, at the end of the day, you look them in the eye and you say, "Hey, can you guarantee me unequivocally, one hundred percent..."
Zero percent.
"...that there's never going to be an opportunity of an event that, that'll risk contaminating the water?" And if they say no, then you can vote your conscience at that point. And, and, you know, I don't know what they're going to bring in for information, but I think, you know, you know, Sherri hit upon it, this, this is an important topic. This is going to have...
I agree.
...far-reaching implications, you know, there's other, there's other projects in town that are, that are right behind these guys that, that want to do the same exact thing, that are going to run into the same exact problem. So, for us to, to just take a step back, take a breath, let's do a little bit more homework, allow them to bring in what they feel they need to bring in, and again, like I said, at the end of the day, it's, it's your vote, you mean...
Interested in putting a timeline on it?
Can we do that?
I'm not willing to go six months, Mike.
No, no.
We've given it eighteen months.
I mean, my thought was...
I mean, one-shot deal?
My thought, my thought was originally, I, I didn't have a timeline in mind, to be honest, but my thought was that we, we try and limit the scope of discussion to the concerns, the, the...
Battery safety and hydrogeology.
Battery safety and hydro, right, those, those two subjects, because that seems to be the, that seems to be the, the sticking point for this project.
What length of time? I don't want to spend another eighteen months on this.
Oh, I, I...
I'm exaggerating, I know.
I think, I think Mike would shoot me where I sit if we went that long.
So, I mean, one way to do this, in the administrative cases that I was involved in earlier in my career, we would have a procedural schedule. We'd have one side file its position, you know, we'd have an agreed-upon set of issues, one side files, the other side files. I, I don't know if there's more than two sides here, and we would have the chance to look at it, to have our own experts to advise us and to, to come to some kind of decision. And it wouldn't, I mean, the length of time could be, could be shorter, but it, I think you would want it to be long enough so that, so that the, the information that came in was, was well-developed and good.
Right.
What I would say has happened here is that we've been developing information as we've gone along.
Right.
We've been learning things as we've gone along, and not everything that we've learned is in the record in this case, and that's, that, that's, that's a problem.
Do you think, Mike?
Mike?
It's a tough one.
It is, it's a difficult situation.
As Sherri said, we've been learning as we're going. Technology's moving faster than we are, and I, I think we said before that if, if we, we, there's a problem, we need a stake in the sand to start someplace, and the thing is, if this were to take technology to kick them in the butt to get them going, whether it's containment area around underneath the batteries or whatever, so be it, but, I mean, that's what they're, that's what engineers are there for, solve problems.
Right.
Not us.
And, and I think we've, we've gone through the process and we've identified the problem.
Well, if...
So, now we can, now we can be, we can have focused discussions.
Yeah, every time we come to a meeting, it seems like it's something new.
Right.
You know, batteries were something that we were aware of before, and all of a sudden, from within two weeks, it was only for the storage of that site only to, two times a year, or, so every time it comes, it's changing all the time, you know, it's a live thing, it's nothing, something, nothing is fixed.
Well, I don't believe two times a year, I think that's, in my opinion.
If, if we decide to open the, the meeting, we can get back into that discussion, but we can't take...
For me, I do it every day. Why not?
So, but I, I, I personally think it's important that we do this, just so that we're doing everything the right way and, and not rushing to a, to a decision that...
Eighteen months is not rushing.
Good point.
Can make that...
I'm, I'm not even going to go there. So, I, I, I would put, I would just put it as I think it's the right thing to do. That's my opinion.
If your opinion, I, I'm not interested unless we have a definitive timeline that we're going to live with. I mean, we've gone through this timeline with another proponent, and it was gone.
Do you think...
Then months later, we're still talking about it.
I mean, if, if we reopen, and if we allow them to bring in an expert, they're going to have to identify an expert, have him do his, his work, because we, we don't want him in here talking off the cuff, we want him in here armed with, with information. We're going to have our own expert who will prepare and then either rebut or agree. That's going to take...
Yeah, we can't meet until we have that in place.
Right, well, we can't meet for a month anyway, because the next, the next meeting coming up is already chock full.
Right.
So, so we're a month out before the first meeting even takes place, and it's going to, I'm going to, I'm, in my head, and you're not going to like the sound of this, but I'm thinking it's going to take six months.
No, no, no. Too much.
Do you think we can do it? I, I, again, I don't want to, I don't want to try to jam it down the drain either.
I agree a hundred percent, but if we have a timeline, okay, this is the amount of time, you tell me what you need. Make your case.
And then we have an amount of time to, to, to either rebut or agree.
And I don't understand why we have to go any further.
So, do you think, do you think ninety days, three, three months is, is doable? Or maybe one twenty?
Actually, I have a question for the applicants, if I can address them.
You can.
If, if we decide to reopen, will you agree? I mean, I'm assuming you would since that seems to be what you're asking for, but wouldn't want us to be in a position where, where we agree to offer you the opportunity to submit information, and you say, "That's good, but it has to be done, you know, within sixty days of the close of the, the earlier hearing." You're, you're not, you're not going to hold us to that, are you?
So, is it, would it be possible for me to address the board, just introduce myself?
Well, we're really not in...
Okay.
If we could, if you could just answer, Mike.
Would it be helpful if I could provide a little bit of context, because I've not been able to present to the board previously, and I, I really appreciate you taking the time that you have to discuss this topic in the way that you are, but it does seem like it's missing, as you rightly noted, a little bit from, from us, because we are the, and, and from other businesses that are affected by this decision.
Well, can, can I interject just a second?
Yeah.
I, I think, if I rephrase your question.
Sure.
If we take a vote today to reopen the public hearing so that we make an opportunity for you to bring in more information, for our experts to review and whatnot, and we said to you, "Okay, we're going to, we're going to vote today, if the vote goes affirmative and we reopen the public hearing, do you think that we can get what needs to be done in the way of gathering information and presenting it and then allowing us time to review it and then come back with findings of agreement or rebuttal, and then possibly one more meeting past that just to tidy up the details? Do you think that that could happen in a three or four month period?"
I'm not sure, candidly.
Well, I mean, it's a pretty important...
It is, it is.
It's a, it's an important question.
I agree, I agree, and frankly, based on the discussion, it feels a little bit like a perverse incentive is being set up here for us to participate in providing additional information that will be then used to bolster the case against us. And, and, you know, frankly, I'd like to believe that I could get a fair hearing.
Well, I think you guys have been getting a fair hearing for eighteen months.
Right, but I, my concern is we've been at this, and you do appropriate, I, I really appreciate, Mr. Chairman, giving the second to talk, but we have been at it for eighteen months, and you've asked really carefully considered questions, and we've brought information to you, and we've spent hundreds of thousands of dollars to do that, credible, strong information with our own resources. So, you know, we would like to believe that that counts for something, that we've been through a long list of carefully considered questions, we've provided you information that we think is useful to you making a strong decision, and now we find ourselves in a position where you're concerned about the quality of the information sufficient to withstand appeal or something like that.
Our, our, our concern for the quality of information really centers around whether or not that battery is going to pose a safety risk to the town.
Okay.
And we want all of the information that we can possibly get from you.
Yeah.
And, and based on the letter and based on comment by Mr. Clavon, you're looking for an opportunity to, you stated quite clearly that we, we are not allowing you that opportunity to bring the expert in to tell us whether or not this can be made safe, and that you were looking for that opportunity.
Yes.
I mean, the letters state that.
That's correct.
So, that's, that's what we're extending. What we're trying to figure out is, to Sam's point, he doesn't want to go another six months or, or twelve months. We, we want to be able to narrow the scope of the information that you're going to bring in, that's going to give us a level of comfort that says, "Okay, we can either vote yes or vote no. If we vote yes, we're doing it with a level of comfort that I can look at my neighbors and say, 'I have, I'm not putting you in harm's way.'"
Right.
And, and do it in a, in a reasonably, I don't want to say it's short, because four months is not a short amount of time, but it's not eighteen months, and, and not drag it out and come to a conclusion. You know, your expert might show up and, and blow us away and say, "Hey, this is how you do it, you know?
Yeah.
How come you people haven't thought of this already? Or, you know, you do this, you do this, you do this, boom, done." Or he might come in and, and tell us the same thing that we've heard, and it didn't sway us at all, and at which point, you know, the, the vote may or may not go the same way. I mean, I can't guarantee how the board members are going to vote. That's the one thing that I, that I pride myself on is there's absolutely no arm-twisting. I mean, everybody votes based on what they've heard and how they feel the information affects the town.
Yeah, I appreciate that, Mr. Chairman.
And we've never discussed it amongst ourselves, ever.
Yeah.
At least I have never talked to any board member about this case unless I'm on live TV.
Right. No, I, I appreciate that, and I think our goal is to provide you all the information that you need. You've asked thoughtful questions, we've provided you thoughtful answers, and I hope you feel that from us, like, we are acting in good faith, we're spending a lot of money to give you the information that you need. I really appreciate the point about public safety. I mean, I live in a small town, I'm on the board of the local land trust, I live in the other family, and we care about those issues. We're doing the same thing that you're doing. Every Tuesday night when we get together, we're thinking about all of those things, just like you are watershed protection and protecting the land and water for our kids. So, I fully appreciate what you're doing. My concern is more, more of a procedural one, so I hope you don't, you know, confuse the two. I, I really am just concerned that, you know, if ninety days go by and we spend more money on consultants, we've just, you know, we've just done more of the same, and frankly, you know, that's a concern for us, right? As an applicant, as a...
That's, that's a legitimate concern.
Yeah.
You know, expending money just, just rains away the potential profits of the project.
Well, we're about a million dollars into the project, and we've relied on a good local process, which I think we've gotten today.
To be fair, to the, you know, you've touched on it a couple of times, you know, you've asked thoughtful questions, you've presented information and whatnot, but, you know, to be fair to the board, it was at your team's behest that we closed the public hearing.
Right.
We didn't shut it down and say, "All right, we're done listening." It wa, it was a, it was a direct result of your team's request to close the public hearing and move to a vote. So, we're giving you an opportunity, you, you've kind of seen the inner workings of what's happening now, you know, you know how the board, the temperature of the room is. You know, you know how the board, the temperature of the room is. You know what it is that concerns us. You know, you know, where it is you have to address to kinda, to, to hopefully relieve our concerns. And then, then we move on. And, you know, if, if the, if the information is, is legitimate and, and it's presented, then the vote could go the other way. But we gotta get there.
Right. Understood. And I appreciate your, your position. Um, and I think the issue is that we're being asked to prove the negative in every case, which is a very, a very, very high standard. I work in markets from Hawaii to Maine to Texas. I, I run the development business for a long run. We are very careful about project citing, as I think you rightly noted. It's a well-sighted project. I really appreciate you saying that. Um, because that, we al, we don't often hear that, right? And so, you know, getting some acknowledgement that like, we spent time thinking about where these projects go, how we buffer them, how we mitigate potential impacts to local communities. That's really important to us. Um, so making well-thought-out commitments during the process is, is absolutely critical. And I think that's a two-way street with the board.
It's, it's.
And then we honor those commitments.
Yeah, it, it, it's nice that you said that.
Yep.
Um, and to go back to the eighteen-month timeframe that we've
Yes.
gone through and, and the amount of money that you've spent.
Yep.
Your first, your first, uh, team, your, your first legal representative was not your friend. Mr. Clavon had, had spent a long time doing damage control, cleaning up after the first team.
Okay.
So some of it was self-inflicted just by a, a poor choice.
Okay.
Of, of the, but, you know, having said that, we wanna get to the, to the end result, both for you and for the town.
Yep.
I mean, it's obvious that the town of Wareham is not against solar.
Obviously.
We ha, we have it. We have lots of it. We have it right there, you know, in that general look area.
Yeah.
So we're not anti-solar. We're not looking for a way to stop solar. It, it, it's part of our life. And I've said it before in, in a few of the meetings, I'm not against solar. I've had two arrays of my own. So I get it. Uh, we just have to do it in such a manner that we just are one hundred percent convinced in our own minds that we're not putting the town at risk. That, that's the, that's the long and the short of it.
I, I fully appreciate that. And I also appreciate your, your position about, um, yeah, Chairperson, just the precedent-setting nature of this case. I think that is absolutely correct. I've been called by dozens of companies asking what's going on here, and, and there's a lot of concern. So I, I really take your point well, that what happens here happens in the rest of Massachusetts and the Commonwealth. And perhaps has, um, slowdown impacts in the Northeast and maybe across the country. Because these are critical decisions that you make that are evidence-based. But having a standard of zero, you know, possibility is, is a very high threshold.
I understand.
Yeah. And so just, you know, that, um, I think training, safety mitigation, all of those, the engineering piece of it, that, that I think someone else references absolutely, that's where we would focus our efforts. Um, proving the negative in every case, very, very hard, obviously.
It's not, it's not only Wareham.
Yeah.
It affects towns around us. Plymouth, Carver, Kingston, it, it's not just us even.
Right.
But, uh, uh, you know, to the point you've said, training, mitigation, we haven't received any of that input.
Okay.
So, you know, here we get, we're, we're already on the road to success.
Got it.
Just by getting the information that's gonna give us that level of comfort that we get this under control.
Okay.
It's not just today. I mean, we're doing something here that affects a generation after us.
Yeah.
Right.
Well, it also affects, um, other developers. You know, I mean, you just said it.
Yeah.
Oh, no doubt, no doubt.
So if, you know, if we can get to a point where, and, and unfortunately, the heavy lifting's on you, being at the front of the, at the front. But if we can get to a point where you could put together a plan that gives us that level of comfort, that paves the way for the people behind you. Now unfortunately, you're gonna put the effort in and you're gonna pay for it. So, you know, hopefully, there's gonna be a lot of steak dinners and thank yous from all these people.
Oh, it's the development business. I doubt it.
But, um.
I'm sure they'll chip in.
What's that?
I'm sure they'll chip in.
Yeah, I, I like that idea.
Yeah. But, you know, we, we just, we need to get there. So that's, that's, you know, and, yeah, I'm, we're only having this discussion. I mean, we haven't even taken the vote. We don't even know if the public hearing is gonna get open.
Right.
But we just wanna get a sense of, if we do open it, are you, are you comfortable with that timeline that we're gonna try to, to live with then?
Well, I really appreciate the candor and, and just being able to talk with you. Um, so, you know, I feel like it's the right kind of environment for good decision-making. I mean, we, we are open to setting a timeline that works. I think it would be helpful if we could go talk to the experts and kinda build a plan. And I, I really appreciate the Chairperson's comments about timing and, um, you know, all the, everything that you described that would be required of this board, who's already sort of been at it for so long. So.
And we're volunteers.
Well, I, I totally understand. I do the same stuff, Mike.
It costs me to be there.
Yeah, yeah, I hear you. And, um, but it is important, right? We do have, and so.
Why I'm still here.
And we wanna get it right on our end, too. So frankly, if, if we can lay out a plan, yeah, we obviously need to go out to consultants. But it'd be great to kinda lay out a plan that is vetted by you in advance so that we understand that we've kinda got the right, we're doing the right scope. Um, is that, would that be, John, I don't know if you wanna comment?
I, I don't think that's unreasonable, but here's our, we have a small dilemma. And that's the calendar.
Yeah.
So because we, um, closed the public hearing at, again, at, at the request of your team. And last Thursday, we ended up taking a vote, which didn't go well for you. The fourteen-day clock started. So we don't, time is not on our hand, on our side.
Right.
And in order for all of this to work, we need, we need a board to vote. Well, I'm leaving Saturday. I'm out of the country for a week.
Okay.
So I'm not, you know, I mean, I, I could make the commitment to zoom in, but I don't know how good the internet is in, in Asia. I mean, like, Carl's, Carl's in the same boat tonight. So the only way realistically that I can see for all of this to work so that we can work together and, and do this all the correct way is to reopen the public hearing. Cause now that would stop that clock and now we can move forward. So I guess it's a, it's a matter of, of two gentlemen saying this is what we plan on doing.
Yeah.
This, you know, this is, this is what we have in mind. You, you are responding back with being able to come up, go to your consultants and come up with a plan. You know, we keep, I keep using four months as the benchmark. It might go five. I don't know. I mean.
You've gone from three to four to five.
I, 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 I'm not gonna drive a stick to the ground and say on August first, we're gonna have this done. Right? Now, I wouldn't do that because that's not realistic. But we just wanna, we want, you know, a level of comfort that we're not gonna go another year. Which I don't think it's in, really in your best interest, cause like you said, the longer it goes on, the more people you get involved, the higher the bill.
Maybe I could synthesize it just a little bit. It sounds as if, um, we'd be in favor of reopening, collaborating, uh, getting more information to address this important issue. Um, it sounds as if, um, without any particular limit, but, you know, in this discussion, we could have a, um, a, a target of three months. Um, but also in the early part of this process, um, to build on this quirk suggestion that, um, either we come to you or you come to us, or both, to try to build some kind of, uh, work plan.
Right.
So that we, we can better understand, uh, what you're looking for. We can better understand what we hope to provide to you and.
We maximize the meeting time.
Yeah.
When we show up at, at, at an open meeting, we know what we're talking about. You're prepared with your details. We're prepared with the fact that we've reviewed your details. We're not getting them, you know, the day before.
And we always do.
Right. And, and that would be an important component is, is, um, you know, no, no eleven-hour data dumps. You know, a, a week in advance, two weeks in advance, you know? Hey, this is what we've got. Here's what you're gonna review for the meeting. We're prepared. And then we can walk in prepared and knowledgeable about what it is you're presenting so that we can, we can do this. I mean.
Yeah. So I appreciate that. Um, that seems reasonable. Uh, thank you.
Okay.
Well, to Mike's point, I mean, we, we've had a problem in the past. And I, I don't, I don't think it's gonna happen, but we've had proponents come in the day of the hearing with more additional. And a long time ago, after that happened many, many, many times, I just, comes in after Wednesday or so, I don't even read it. I just, I come home from work, I wolfed down dinner, I'm here for four hours. I'm trashed the night. We've already had two, two town meeting nights this week. This is last Thursday, we met, two town meetings, and now tonight, and we're volunteers.
Yeah, we just, I, I think if we're prepared, you know, I think Sherri's idea is a great idea. In fact, I think we should adopt it for all projects going forward.
There is something, as long, when we can get our arms around what we, the information we really need, we should, um, we should confine our attention to what we need to resolve those issues.
Absolutely.
Well, that opens no other doors.
Right.
I mean, it, it's a public hearing. The public's invited. You need to stay focused.
Well, I think we'll, uh, again, you know, we could put on the agenda the topics based on the information sharing so that we know exactly what we're discussing.
We don't.
And that's, that's the topic of discussion, right?
I like that.
Yeah. I, I also think we could build in a, just a round of written information so that the public can submit written information.
Right.
And that I think may be useful as well.
Yeah, it'll help be, make the meetings more productive, for sure.
I, I don't know if it'll make you feel any more comfortable, but I was for this project.
Yeah.
I, if you, if we voted a year ago, we would've voted yes. New information keeps coming in and it's scary. The implications of the aquifer being taken anyway are scary. And that's been my main focus over, I don't know how many months. But, you know, and I, on my own, started going out and looking at EPA reports and state reports and committee reports and different organizations that have been involved. And it gets scarier and scarier the more you read. Uh, so, I mean, I, I, I will listen to everything you say. I don't have my mind made up. I do have my mind made up right now, but I'm, I'm willing to change. I'm not going to stick to it only because, because. If you come over with valid new information that solves my problems, I'm fine.
Yeah.
I, I, I'm, I just, make sure you know that. I'm not against you, per se.
Appreciate it. Yeah, and, and, Mr. Chairman, just, you know, if I could, I really appreciate the volunteer aspect of the job. It is hard. And so I think one thing that we've done in the past is kind of like a, uh, workshop-type thing, where we could have experts kind of available for you if it was easier to, um, ask questions and just maybe kind of, is it possible to do something sort of offline?
Information gathering?
Yeah.
And then bring that information to an open meeting?
Offline this far.
Not offline.
Sorry. I mean, I don't mean that from a, um, you know, I, I mean that in a, like, you would sanction, you would approve kind of a, a work session.
Well, we do that, we've done that in the past where we've had workshops with, the public is entitled to, like, tonight, they can read you. They just can't weigh in.
Right.
So, yeah, we have no problem with that.
Just try to create, pick a ways that would be more efficient for you.
Always in this form.
You know, um, just trading paper, sometimes it's almost, right? You're, you're, you're in there and I'm doing the same thing.
No, I, I think that's a good idea.
Yep. Okay. Well, we're happy to be creative about providing information for you, being creative about other elements of the project. Um, we were, I included some notes about our pollinator-friendly work that we've been doing in other, um, states. We just got pollinator certified on another project. Um, but, you know, there are lots of tools at our
At your disposal.
disposal to kinda work through these kinds of things. So, um, really appreciate the open mind. I appreciate your comments. Um, thank you.
Okay. Um, well, if, if there's no other discussion on it.
I think you should modify your, uh, your motion to also rescind the previous vote.
He didn't let me. He put more heads in my mouth, Ken.
I think that's what you're.
I could do it from across the room. So I would modify my motion to entertain a motion to reopen the public hearing, to, to accept further information concerning the safety of the batteries and the safety of the aquifer. And to, do we need to rescind the, the vote all by itself? Or can I do this?
You have to rescind the, the previous vote.
All, all by itself? Not in reopen the public hearing? Has to be two votes?
You can do it simultaneously.
Okay, that's what I was doing. Okay. So I make, I would entertain a motion that we, A, rescind the vote of the board concerning thirty-three dash twenty-one Wareham PV1 LLC zero route twenty-five from Thursday, the twentieth.
Mm-hmm.
And in doing so, reopen the public hearing to take additional information concerning, um, safety of the battery storage from, uh, supplied experts in the field. How'd that work?
Yeah, I do, I do.
Yes, we, well, we discussed that.
All right. Yeah, that's good.
Okay. Glad you approved. So that's the motion.
Show moved.
Do we have a second? I can be the second. I was looking at you, but if you want me to be the second, I can.
I'll second it.
Okay.
I may seem on the same page anyway, so.
We have a motion by Sam Corbett, seconded by Mike Baptiste. Uh, we have three available votes tonight, so all in favor. Mike?
Aye.
Sam?
Aye.
And Chair votes aye.
We're looking to work with you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Really appreciate, yeah.
Okay, I appreciate you coming down.
Absolutely.
You know, I know it's a, a ride.
No, it's fine.
I know John has his head elsewhere, so we appreciate you coming in.
Thank you very much.
Okay. Uh, with that being said, I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
Oh, move.
Motion by Sam Corbett, seconded by, or do you wanna second?
Second.
Seconded by Mike Baptiste, all in favor. Mike? You in favor of adjourned?
I'm a reasonable person.
Sam?
As you have not.
Sherri?
Aye.
And Chair votes aye. Good night, everybody.